It looks like you got a tan.
I did. I spent many hours in the pool with the kids.
Absolutely.
Jealous?
Don't encourage them.
At seven o'clock, I'll call this meeting to order. This is a special council meeting for the purpose of getting information on the new North Star Center and all of the details associated with that. The first order of business is pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I want to thank you all for coming out tonight. It was not the best night. I was asking who in the world called this meeting, so I guess that'd be me. I guess we have a lot of difficulties for Monday night meetings. First thing I want to do is introduce everybody. I'm Tom Lohahi. I'm the mayor of Breezy Point, and we'll start down here with our council members. Councilmember Bakken, why don't you introduce yourself and say a little bit?
Gary Bakken, 29464 Strawberry Lane. Glad to be here, folks. Good to see you turn up.
Councilmember Ball?
Rebecca Ball. Can I say my address?
Oh, you don't have to say your address. Say anything you want to.
Oh, hi.
Jerry Mitchell, Nickel Road.
Michael Maroni on Snowman Circle.
Joe Weathers, I'm on the planning commission.
I'm Tracy Donovan, also on the planning commission on Lake Douglas Way.
Roger Tice on the PNC.
Well, thank you. As I said, the purpose of this workshop is to provide information to both the city council and planning and zoning on the new North Star Center project that's coming up at the southwest corner of intersection, southwest intersection of County Road 11 and Ranchet Drive. So the first thing I want to do is get an overview and description of the project, and for that, introduce Dave Landecker for representing the White Birch Development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just going to hand over, just have a couple. No, this is the PowerPoint. Yeah, I think that's good. So this is the PowerPoint, and it's just, um...
Make sure the reporter gets it.
There's one slide that has some changes to the title of the graphic. Did you copy?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, planning commission and council for providing this opportunity to address the council and planning commission and public citizens of Breezy Point and others in regards to this exciting meeting. For the planning commission, there's probably some redundancies here because they've had the opportunity to see this for almost 18 months off and on with the project, and a few council people have as well, but for the rest, it's sort of an overview of things that have been happening and just overall the processes the mayor said. And so I've kind of developed the presentation to follow script with your, sort of your order of the agendas to the things that you'd like us to show. With that, I will start. So in 2017, we actually presented this master plan to the city of Breezy Point's planning commission in conjunction with bidding and, well, applying and then receiving approval for the conditional use permit for the convenience store market site that's located right here. And what's exciting about this plan is it sort of shows you an overview. There's currently all about 40 acres of property with 111 bisecting it, and there's plans to do in addition to the hockey arena, another sheet of ice, redo the dormitory area into sort of a recreational, potentially swimming pool, weightlifting, move the, sort of the lodging, dormitories up into this area. So that's a big, big master plan for this facility, and then dropping down across the street to the area that we're discussing tonight primarily is this site with, again, primary interest being this particular location right here on this building. And we can go back to these slides if you have questions, we can kind of move around. Grading started, we call it the Red Barn site, so redevelopment of the Red Barn site. There's the old Red Barn, and started in the fall of 2017 after we got a conditional This is the current site plan that we're using, bringing for you tonight. We've looked at in production documents, you'll see some planning and things, but this is the building. We're looking at this darker blue building, and the green building right here is being sort of the first buildings to be built on this site. And that's the Cayuna Regional Medical Center, first phase, which is about 7,000 square feet. It will have one doctor, one nurse practitioner, three nurses, one lab tech, one radiology tech, and two schedulers there on a full-time basis. Guidepoint Pharmacy will be on the westerly portion of the building, occupying approximately 2,200 square feet. They'll have one pharmacist, a pharmacist technician, and two clerk receptions. And then the North Star Building Two, which we've talked about, and this sort of is one of the questions to answer, is what other kinds of tenants might you have sitting out there? We've got in-motion physical therapy that is looking at about approximately 4,000 square feet on Building Two, which is the building to the south of Building One, which, here's the Cayuna building. And you can just see a glimmer of it here on the backside. So pharmacist building is here, there'd be sidewalks to allow patients and guests to enter that building here. Haven't got into full design on that at this point. There's another 4,000, 6,000 square feet, so it's about a 10,000 square foot building that's being considered, of which there's other professional groups, both in the medical field and outside the medical field, that have expressed an interest, but we don't have any commitments that we can share with you at this time. So CRM and Guidepoint Site is the first phase, consists of about 9,200 square feet, and again, it's green. We've got an approval from the Croix County Highway Department to have a right turn lane in only, so you can enter the site, but ultimately, we have to come back out onto Ranchet and then enter the intersection area. So the parking for this entire complex built out would occupy all the parking that's, you know, that's shown here. And so that's sort of, this area then facilitates parking and would facilitate all the entire build-out. But again, building-wise, it's these two portions of the building that are being looked at construction currently. The expansion, the, you know, and it's hard, how do you commit to an expansion? So in Cayuna's crystal ball, they believe that if things go according to their market studies and review, that the expansion could happen as soon as, within three years to five years. So that's kind of what they're thinking about expansion. The market site slash convenience store, this was approved in a CUP in 2017 by the planning commission. There's been very little changes to this site already, and we did change interest to accommodate the medical building here. There was an opportunity to actually make a more safer connection into the convenience store, and then on this particular plant, we do not show a car wash, which was approved in the CUP in 2017. As far as project schedule goes, this is just sort of the engineering schedule that they've set up, and I just, you know, again, it's part of this packet, and it's available to the city to have, but it kind of goes through sanitary sewer discussions, which have occurred and are occurring, planning commission meetings, you know, starting back, they've already started, I've had an introduction meeting up until, you know, so it's sort of just ranges of when things could happen. So we've got preliminary design documents that are being shared, council meeting, including this one tonight. Preliminary pricing documents are in process. We have, the project is actually out to bid right now with three contractors, who are getting both the building and the civil, municipal sewer extension pricing put together. Once that comes in, then we get into sort of value engineering, actually build the construction documents. We've got a final plat building submission process that we need to go through with the city to have everything, you know, meet that, meet that point, get the actual building permit, contracts with the construction folks to build, and there's the site construction, and then we've got building construction with the ultimate goal of trying to have an occupancy of 4-1 2019, so April 1st. And that's, I mean, that's sort of a soft date if that moved around a little bit, if certain circumstances required us to move things a month or two around. I mean, this is just based on today's timeline, and these are the best information that I can try to get to. One of the things that we're trying to do is, on the civil site side of it, is to get the sewer in and all of the paving done before hardfall hits, so that we don't have to deal with an opening in April where we have partial gravel roads or gravel parking areas and things like that to deal with. So they can build all winter long, but we'd like to get all this civil site work done relatively as soon as possible, sort of. Another look at the schedule would be some of the same information, but working with the county, we've got some highway easement things that we're dealing with there and trying to wrap up. There will need some other permit applications or permits from them to get the sewer across the road, and we've got a water system that we need to deal with for fire protection potentially. So there's some things with Croix County that we're dealing with on an ongoing basis. They do have easements in their hand, and they were submitted to them, so they're reviewing. We've got a preliminary final plat, which actually has been submitted and will be in front of the planning commission in their April meeting. Ultimately, we're looking at recording a final plat in May. Then we get into the building permitting, again, engineering plans, bidding it. We've got a developer's agreement that we need to collaborate to complete. We've got the construction of those facilities, and then the site construction, and then the financial assistance piece, assistance piece, which we need to talk about later tonight. It's not part of my presentation. So that's kind of the scheduling thing, and again, we can go back and talk about it. This was the convenience store conditional use permit conditions, all 14 of them, which we can go back to and worry with those details. There are three, however, as the mayor pointed out, what are those three that talk about the sewer option? There's a sanitary sewer line shall be extended to South Property Line and Ranchet Drive. City engineer to approve all plans of utility extensions. Developer agreement required for utility extensions prior to construction. So in a nutshell, again, this is the CRM C building, I'll focus on that for the moment. We've got a right turn lane coming in right here, sort of the central road or drive corridor to the project, back out to Ranchet. The sewer starts at the gravity line that's sitting north across the road that serves a number of properties, but was built primarily to get pride service to the school, elementary school, ECO view. So hook up here, we need to do a jacking or boring, whatever the engineering folks determine that will work with the county, and then get our manholes in place. We've got one here, 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 here at Ranchet, and then going south to our South Property Line. This series of sewer is actually not in the road, not in Ranchet, it's actually in the project property per se, and we're creating an easement in the plant. And the reason for that is because we will still get, we will still have access to that public infrastructure if the city desires to take off and go further with it or access it for forced main uses, wherever it might be. So this is the sewer. Obviously, there'll be connections to each of the buildings once they're built at that particular moment in time. This is a preliminary plat, again, not worrying with the details, but at the end of the day, one of the conditions for conditional use permit was is any additional development on the site would trigger the need to do a subdivision. So here's the subdivision, this is the preliminary plat, which shows that we're developing four lots in the commercial zoning district. This lot is in urban reserve, and we're not changing that, we're not changing the configuration as it's recorded in the deeds in the courthouse, just the title will change because it's being plotted. Here's one easement that the county will be receiving, this triangle right here, and then there's a stormwater easement ponding area that's been built to accommodate regional stormwater for this entire site. So the entire site is equipped to place all the stormwater there, so we don't have to deal with it on a site-by-site basis and have, you know, all these various components that's been sort of pre-planned, if you would, to deal with that. We retain the integrity of the wetland, the buffer along the edge of the wetland, all of those lands will be left as they are. This is the final plat. The only primary difference is we took the contour line out, and it just shows what will ultimately be recorded at the recorder's office. Again, back to the master plan, when we submitted this originally, we talked about calling the garage, that should possibly be there. So we've got a second sheet of ice restaurant, which shows up in this location. Lodging and dormitory back in here, recreational center was here. We've got an assisted living, assisted senior living group that's looking at property behind here, one of the larger undeveloped lots, medical services, so kind of a medical campus is what's emerging, and then some other professional and potentially some retail along with the larger convenience store. So those are some other potential uses. Again, this is sort of on this particular site plan, it just speaks towards the things that might happen. Again, assisted senior living, somebody's looking at this location right here, so this building configuration is not fixed. In fact, Building Two is not necessarily fixed until we actually get into design of those tenants, but again, I'm just giving you kind of a look as to what it may potentially look like at some point. Just a very picture of what the ice arena looks like, pretty blah. Here's what the south side looks like as it currently sits without snow. And I think, oh, we just jumped over the most important of our questions.
Okay. At this point, I'll take questions from the council and the commission at this point, and I'll start with Councilmember Bakken. Any questions at this point?
None whatsoever.
Councilmember Ball?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Councilmember Mitchell?
No. No questions.
Maroni?
No questions.
Commission?
No questions. No questions.
Nobody has any questions?
No questions.
Okay. We'll open it up to take questions from the public. Anybody wishing to ask questions about the project, please step up and just ask your questions, please.
Go to the microphone.
Yes, please, go to the microphone.
I'm late to the meeting, my name is Kurt Johnson, my residence is 10253 Strawberry Lake Road, Pequot Lakes, Minnesota. I, most of you may know that I'm also on the school board, and I'm also an ideal township supervisor. So in those capacities, I'm here as a citizen, addressing this project. I guess some of the questions I have, real quickly, and I'm starting to be late, maybe you covered this already, but the emergency portion of that clinic, is that an emergency care, as it's stated on the, an equivalent of an emergency care, if you will?
I'm not sure I can answer that.
Okay. Well, if it is, that would be tremendous. I mean, and the fact that our closest emergency is Crosby, Aiken, Staples, or Brainerd, given the fact that we would have, I mean, and I don't know if most of you are familiar, we have coverage of our area with ambulances, those sort of things, but one in particular I can cite is that we had a recent injury, or at least one that I was there to witness of a student athlete, and it took 15 to 20 minutes to get the ambulance there, and then they had to go all the way to Brainerd. And so this facility, we're here, and we're in the capacity of emergency, that would serve a lot of concerns that we have, I would think, or at least I could express, I would think, for a lot of the folks that I talked to, was having that closer, having that more readily available. And we all know what happens in the summertime up here.
Unfortunately, I don't think we have anybody here from CRM C.
Right. But it sure would be nice, and I know you can't force that, but...
That's a good comment.
I'm sorry, Your Honor, but that, I think, would be incredible. And then the other final question I have is, is that you had a total number of jobs that, I think I counted 12 real quickly, with the initial phase, and then with an expansion, do you think that employment base would increase on a one-to-one basis, or do you think, do you have any sense of what the additional employment would be with the expansion?
Yeah, I think it was about all.
Thank you.
So I think the, if I go back to that slide, of course, the pharmacy is doing their whole build-out right now, so, yeah, your question is, is, what I heard from Cayuna Regional Medical Center is that there's potential, once the addition is built on, that there could be four doctors.
Oh, and support for that.
And then support for that, which, which may then, in fact, you know, sort of double the numbers, but in this instance, the doctors, as I understand, are kind of like on, you know, everybody needs to see the patient, so I mean, until the patient kind of gets to a point where they can add to, and then the next, the next series. In one of the previous publications, I think it showed what the, and I don't have that information with me, and I apologize, but it actually showed what the number of rooms would be that they would have for, you know, seeing patients, and it's, it seems to me it was eight or 10 patient rooms on the first phase.
And the ambulatory support would be really good.
Well, I know that we've talked about ambulatory support, and I know that they, you know, all of the hospitals work together with, you know, land and such. So I mean, I know we had that discussion, I just, I don't know about the actual, you know, reciting, is it an emergency care facility? I mean, I know I've talked to them about what kinds of things can you perform, and of course, they'll have radiology and the doctors and nurse practitioners and things, so there's a lot of things that they can do to, you know, when they're open, but it's not a 24-hour facility, and so it's a matter of being able to staff into something like that where it happened, can you get people there and deal with it? So I'll bring it up, I'll get you a clear answer to that question.
Thank you. And I would have to interject at this point, is that one of the things Breezy Point has going for it is we have an excellent paramedic program here, and that coupled with the airport, we can respond to emergencies very rapidly. So from that standpoint, I think we have it fairly well-covered as far as, you know, emergency services, quick emergency services being available to us, but that is really a good point, and for person, you know, driving in, if they know that that's there, that they can get emergency...
I'm sorry, interrupt you.
No, that's...
But, you know, the potential for it to become something.
That's correct.
Really, if it's not there now.
Yeah, and that's why I'm really excited about this project, from the standpoint, it has a lot of potential to be a really big benefit to the city of Breezy Point, and that's why we're so excited about seeing this. Okay, anything else for White Birch Development on the project? Okay. Next thing I want to talk about, we've had some requests and discussion on some sort of assistance, financial tools that the city would be offering. So at this point, between Patrick Wussa, our city administrator, and Jason Murray, we'll have a discussion on TIF versus tax abatement financing, because it's a topic that I know I'm light on from the standpoint of I haven't had to deal with this before, and not a whole lot of our council members have also. So, Jason?
Well, thank you, Mayor. Council, hopefully this is as simple as a plug-and-play, so we'll see if it picks it up, and it does, so...
If I might start, Jason?
Oh, go ahead.
First thing council and the public should know is that we do have an application for TIF, tax increment financing and tax payment. The city has their own application process that has been provided to the applicant at this time, and so we have not received that, and as of yet, I haven't had any questions in three weeks on the issue, so...
Okay.
Go ahead, Jason.
Thanks, Governor. Good evening, Council. Jason Murray, David Drone Associates, sewer municipal finance firm based out of Minneapolis, but I get the pleasure of living here in central Minnesota. I live just north of Alexandria. I joined the DDA about three years ago, but prior in my life, I spent, prior in my life, I spent 15 years in Alexandria as their economic development director, so I lived in TIF and tax payment quite often. So I get the privilege of serving central and northwest Minnesota, probably this area, I'm originally from Wagonia, so it's my whole area, and it was a great opportunity to stay in this area by coming to work with the DDA. So thank you for the opportunity to come speak to you tonight. I'll try and, as I told Jerry before the meeting started, say how it's easy to get into the conversation, into the details, and real deep into TIF and tax payment. My point tonight is to really try and inform you, I think it's been a long time since the council has approved the tax increment, the fact that the county, I think it was, the last one was decertified in 2011 and approved really in the, really, really 2000, so it's been a while since communities have been through it, so it's always a great time to have a refresher in the conversation of what's changed, what's next, and really, from a council perspective, look at what the priorities will be when you use a, look at using municipal finance on things. So the beauty about TIF and tax abatement, they're fairly similar in their calculations, but different in their detail, and different in their admin, and a little bit different in their process, so I'll highlight some of that. I've also, Patrick was kind enough to send over some of this preliminary information, so what I've tried to do is also apply potentially this project to the rules and regulations that are all there in these programs. So we'll get into the, that's probably the area in the presentation that we'll dig into the weeds a little bit, or move into the weeds a little bit, just in flying into this project. So with that, and sort of with TIF, TIF is really, to simplify it the best way I can, is it's an incentive program that uses the difference between the new taxes versus the old taxes, and captures that over a period of time. You know, certainly different TIF programs with different, different uses of TIF, I'll talk about those here in a second, but really, to summarize, the best way to summarize TIF is to get a comparison between the new and the old. There's housing TIF districts, housing TIF districts have a 26-year life. The one major thing with housing TIF districts, it can be used for both single and multi-family developments, but the biggest thing is there's some, there's income requirements will hold behind them, and that's, that becomes the burden of the developer when they either sell a lot for a single-family home or do multi-family rental and are required to meet an income. You can see the two tests are up there, the, the one for single family, right now, it's a state median income, 95% of the development must meet this income requirement for a family or two of the last, it's right around 80,000, and for a family of three or more, it's 90,000 or less, so, for single family, and then you can see the two requirements for multi-family. Redevelopment TIF districts, they also run for 26 years. Biggest thing with redevelopment TIF is you must be addressing blighted conditions, you must, and go out with data to deteriorate conditions, and sort of, this works really well when you're looking at a, at a multi-carcel, older facilities, older buildings. They must be certified, substandard by your local building official, and then they can move into, into tax increment, kind of, in this process. So the last one, I shouldn't say the last one, there are two other ones, but the three most common are your housing redevelopment and economic development TIF districts, there's also soil condition and a contaminated soils TIF district, which partly are those two ever used in greater Minnesota, most of those qualify as redevelopment property, some of the contamination and soils corrections. Economic development TIF districts run for... Economic development TIF districts run for nine selections or, or nine years. You can see it's primarily focused on manufacturing warehouse, redevelopment, or senior research and development, hotel marketing, tourism, and then there's a qualified border that, for communities that are along the border, you know, totally separate from Iowa. The last exception to that is the small cities, and this is where we'll, we'll get a little bit into the weeds here, and apply it a little bit here to the Breezy Point project. Small cities can use economic development for commercial development, green space development, if you are under five thousand population, and if you're greater than twelve, ten miles or more from a population center, about ten thousand or more. Obviously, this comes into play here with Breezy Point, with the Brainerd, Brainerd area specifically. And we have to do that, and we have to measure it by the closest two points, and I've highlighted it from, from a standpoint of the map. The other point to be able to qualify is you got to stay under fifteen thousand square feet. That's going to be a key component, I know, I know David talked about his project. We're going to apply some of those rules to this project here in just a second. Here's the map, and Minnesota Office of State Audit requires us to make this measurement, to make this filing. As you can see, this area right down here is the Brainerd area. Baxter right now currently does not have a population according to, according to the demographic as well, it's over ten thousand yet. But you can see, measuring from the closest point to the, this is kind of the northwest corner of Brainerd, where I just, twelve and a half, twelve point six miles. I've also did a secondary one here, just coming over more to the central location for, of Brainerd, again, about tall and out lines. So, from a distance standpoint, you qualify to be able to use the small cities exemptional for economic development. One of the challenges to applying to this TIF district, my view of this development right here, this project right here, and I know David, it's at its phases, it's, it's, for right now, it's, it's the pharmacy project plus the medical center project, but as you can see, it's complying over fifteen thousand square feet. If the same owner owns all three of those facilities, it will not qualify as tax increment. And the minute phase, phase two happens, where if they add on that second seven thousand square foot, that takes it up over that threshold, if it's in a TIF district, the minute that happens, it has severe movement of the TIF, because not even exceeded the fifteen thousand. The question will be, ultimately, will this all be under the one same ownership? So?
Does that disqualify the entire project then, or just the benefits of fifteen thousand?
It would, because it's all joint, it would disqualify the entire project. So, that's all the fifteen thousand. Is a point for this conversation or for this project, but I just want to make sure that the developer is aware that over time, this may be a challenge to retain economic development with fifteen thousand square foot.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I have a quick question. What is there a penalty if, if phase one were to only happen, and let's say three to five years down the road, that's when phase two happens? Obviously, the, the TIF is, is taken away from it, but is there a penalty to the years that have been already approved by that?
No, not necessarily, because they, when you, when you enter into, when you, if the council moves forward with a municipal incentive, there's what they're called in the development agreement, and all those conditions and requirements are laid out in that development agreement that guides the use of tax increment. So, with that, the developer will know that upon possibly this phase two, it would take them over that threshold, and at that point, there's not, there's not so much a penalty that the developer would have to pay back to the city. We just, at this point, the, the city would decertify it, close out the TIF district and move forward. Here's just a sample TIF projection, and you can see how it's captured. You can kind of see the, up in here, you can kind of see the original values, the original tax capacity, and the potential of three phases. This is a little bit probably, a little bit more confusing with the multiple phases, but you can kind of see how it would work over the life of this TIF district. This is a economic development TIF district, so you can start to see that the, the original values, tax capacity, once the expansion happens, phase one, you can see it jumps to about eighty-two hundred there. It's captured difference, multiplied times the current tax rate gives you the gross increment. And so, you can kind of see how TIF works, and it's targets, this captured area, multiplied times the, the tax rate gives you the gross increment. And this one, again, this is always confusing because it adds changes to, we can see how the goal of the life of the district. Now, in this case, this project has its phase three happening by the fifth year rule. That's a perky rule that all development has to be completed by the fifth year, or no new agreements are allowed in tax increment. So, this is a, that's just a perky rule, but I thought I'd show that to you, get a little bit in the weeds on it. But, again, you can see the life over the, over the fifth district, the city's allowed to retain ten percent for admin purposes, that is a documented expense. Some more time Patrick and, and his staff spend with administering the TIF, that's all time that they can dock towards this administrative expense. Any questions on that? I went through it pretty quickly, but as you can see, well, one, one point I'll make is, a lot of times we get questions about school districts when it comes to use of municipal incentives. One of the things with tax increment, back in two thousand thirteen, the law changed and protected house school districts, tax rates are captured in, in TIF. We have to, we have to account for some of their general debt that's, that's out there. And so, basically, if there's general debt out there, it serves as a reduction, and you can kind of see that, maybe I might have cut it off a little bit, but you can see that the, the rate is about thirteen here, and see it drops to about six. That's that calculation we have to, to, to make, so it does shelter, for lack of a better term, shelter the school district from that impact of tradition that's happened with tax increment. Okay?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So, the increment is a column that's best addressed in the total net revenues, is that what would be available, and in, in full disclosure, I was a commercial real estate broker developer for twenty-five years, and was involved in several TIF developments. And the developer and/or the user of the property was able then to redirect, utilize that income stream towards debt service on, in some cases, it was limited to site improvements, parking lot lighting, parking lot construction, some of those infrastructure, it is, about about four processes in here. The developer then would be able to utilize that income stream, however, they have, they have this person who paid the city, that, that column of administration, they pay that directly?
That's taken out from the county is when they pay the taxes. Basically, what happens is maybe more of the procedural question, I may have, is what happens is, is the project happens, the new tax capacity's added, so the developer at this point pays their full tax toll. So, what happens is, is they end up paying their full tax rate around this tax capacity, and this is actually what this, this gross tax increment is what's generated out of those taxes. So, when they pay their taxes, basically what happens is this amount of total net revenue comes back to the city to be dispersed to the developer potentially in any instance. So, they pay their full taxes based on the, the new project, and they reimburse the difference between that and the new.
So, within that development agreement, as to how those, those funds are prescribed to whatever use that would be within the development agreement, are there restrictions on what the use of those funds could be in the small cities rule, for instance?
They're fairly broad, they're fairly broad, they're mainly, eligible uses of that increment are mainly ground-level and both, so a lot of your infrastructure qualifies, site improvements, your leveling, water drainage, all those preparation, site track is qualified. You also can capture some of the public improvements, if the county would say it's the developer's responsibility to put the turn lane in, that also qualifies as early public improvements that may happen. So, Jerry?
You might want to explain the difference between a pay-as-you-go and a debt-TIF project.
Sure. In, in, oh, maybe, did I have earlier? There's, there's a little bit of the site, public site improvements of what can, can be used, but there's really two forms of how TIF can, can come about. And it can be supported, TIF can be used to pay bonds, which I believe the city has done, yes. That increment then, when it comes to the city, can be used to shuffle to the debt service fund and pay debt related to the project, whether it be sewer and water, maybe the road that the city incurred in private, or pledges to the developer upfront to say, we'll give you the X amount of assistance, we'll just keep the TIF over time, and they incurred debt. Pay-as-you-go is actually the less risky point, and really, a lot of communities are moving towards pay-as-you-go bonds, or you hardly see any cities do bonds anymore upfront financing. Pay-as-you-go is simply, the developer pays his taxes, this amount comes to the, to the city after, excuse me, this amount comes to the city after the admin, and the OSA costs, they refund then the developer that portion over a period of time. So, the pay-as-you-go is all on the developer, the risk is all on the developer. With bonds, the city assumes a little more of the risk over time than if it's a commitment. Some will have them with the project, it all goes to fund. The income, the increment's lower than what was projected, and some of the protections weren't put in place to protect the city, the same comes on the risk without those bonds. And in this case, the pay-as-you-go puts the risk on the developer. They upfront, they do all these improvements, and the city just simply agrees, will pay ninety percent over X number of years for reimbursement for those expenses. So, thanks, Jerry, that was a good point.
Yeah, you said you had a question?
I do, I actually have two. What's the lifespan of a TIF? Is there length of time?
In this case, specifically for economic development, you'd have nine years by law. Now, the council can deviate from that, they can say five years, seven, it's really up to the council, but by law, the council will have the nine years to provide assistance and development.
So, nine years is max?
Max, that's the case.
Okay, and secondly, I would assume that the senior housing would be over fifteen thousand square feet, if that would happen, would that void the rest of it?
Not so much, there's, this is going to be, we will have to, when the, if the council moves forward, is, is we're going to have to deviate what is, or delineate what is the commercial side of it and what is potential housing side of it. The housing, long-term, most likely be left out of this TIF district, you, you can't whole mangle uses, and that's the best way to put it. So, if this project moves forward, we're going to specify what the economic development and commercial activities are. If there's senior housing on the, the other side of the road, or I'm going to say that the developer wants to in the future have, we're going to set that aside, if they delineate that, or senior housing, we want to make sure that's pulled out of the, the economic development TIF district, so that's housing.
Thank you.
In the TIF district, it's defined by boundary?
Yeah, parcel numbers are usually, even, when this gets replatted, it may be just one parcel, or it could be multiple parcels depending on how many selling properties, if it's, if it's condominiumized.
To Mr. Mitchell's question, then, you, you wouldn't have a TIF district and exempt a particular parcel within that boundary, you'd have to have that outside of it?
Yeah, preferably, because it potentially has a different use. Yes. If it stays commercial, ultimately, maybe a movie theater or something like that wants to go on some of that backdrop, or maybe put it in, but based on what, what the developer's providing tonight, and potentially housing, my, my recommendation would be to the council to consider that.
The total net revenues back to the developer, does that net revenues have to be applied then to that project, or can they pocket the cash, can they put it towards the senior housing, which is not included in the TIF district, can they put it at the ice arena? What, what's their obligations of use in that revenue from?
They'll have, basically, what would, if, if the council moves forward and looks at this TIF district, and in this case, the council's going to want to see, my eyes are going to get them in bad, phony glasses, about six hundred and eighty-one thousand of total net revenue down in this corner. If that is what is pledged to the developer of the TIF district, the developer, once the project happens, they're going to have to turn receipts into the council up after construction has happened, that says we spent six hundred and eighty-one thousand on this project, in-site improvements, public road, sewer and water connections, legal, admin, and local rate. Yep. Professional services. There are some legal and engineering fees that are better covered by, like, land, land acquisition is also part of a TIF qualifying expenses, it just all depends on when this was acquired, and some timing. Generally, the developer has no problem meeting this full net revenue or the total obligation. So, to answer your question, council member, is, we'll know upfront, before we pay them one dime, how much money they have into these development costs and what this TIF is covering and qualifying.
That, that would be covered within the developer's agreement, actually, isn't it?
Yeah.
Your schedule?
Yeah, yeah. Kind of the process, there is a public improvement or a public hearing requirement for tax increment. In front of you tonight, I set out two schedules, and then, these are just hypothetical, but I just thought it'd be the council, they could be able to say, okay, this is potentially what would happen. There's one that says, just regular scheduling, one on site is, is highlighted with waivers. Let's, let's set the waiver one to the back for now. Basically, what, what the schedule says is, you need about thirty to, really about forty-five to sixty days to get this done. There's a, there's a formal thirty-day notice to the school district and to the county, that they get, they get thirty days to review the plan and provide comments. They can't stop the project, but they get, they get an opportunity to provide feedback on the project. And that all kicks off when the council, it starts with the council, on April second, the schedule kind of says, council calls public hearing, authorizes execution of the, or execution preparation of the TIF plan. The TIF plan is just a document that covers, governs the use of the increment over the nine years, and it meets the statute order requirements of the public. We're fully disclosing to the county and school district and to the public what our use of that increment's going to be, what the parcels of the district are, what the projects are. It's just a full, full disclosure document that is used as part of the approval process. Once we notify the county, with, and school district, we have to hold a public hearing, or not hold a public hearing sooner than thirty days. And so, with that schedule, that first schedule, I think, staying on meeting tasks and staying to point, really, it's about sixty days. Your first meeting, and then, is the earliest the public meeting would be held, the public hearing would be held, and then after that, construction can take place. One of the things that, if the council moves forward with TIF, is you can't issue any building permits until after the TIF process has happened. It's, in the first slide, there's a little but for, one of the public findings we must make in this process, but for use of TIF, this project will move forward. And generally, the developer, you've seen some of the site plans, they've got extensive sewer and water collection, they've got extensive site development cost, they've, they've got some sewer extension that they've got to work through. It's simply a statement, we've got some significant upfront expenses involved with this project, and about this assistance in progress. So, we make that finding based on the developer they must submit, when they, when they request formal tax increment, they'll also include a but for letter, but for assistance. So, you get in a little bit into approval. The other, the other timeline, there is a way that you can expedite TIF a little bit, but you've got to ask for the county and school district's participation on it, and that's through the waiver process of that thirty-day notice. So, I simply put that in there because I know that we're hitting the spring, and sometimes you, you get in a rush of moving forward, and we got to get this going. It doesn't feel like, you look at some things, but, you know, spring is right out in the corner, and it's, and it's going to be construction season here very soon. So, the point of the waiver conversation was, is, is to try and lay it out to say, okay, if, if we go the waiver route, how can we do that? And the earliest we could get that done is, the public hearing when we make twenty-first contingent upon the county, at their county board meeting in April, and the school district, at their school board meeting in April, they waive it, but we still have to give them the TIF plan, which they're able to draw that process. There's, again, just some of the public, public improvements that are detailed in what those expenses are in the development agreement. Perky rules, ten percent admin, but for TIF, we talked a little bit about, and government, again, I'm just, really, the, the non-eligible is just levy support governmental buildings. There's just a couple of things, four here and five. Uh, there's just a couple things, four-year and five-year rule, no development. Basically, the four-year, if, if we approve this today, and in four years, nothing happens, we're required to notify the county instead of the sign. The five-year rule, uh, limits the amount of time we can, can obligate the, the tax increment. So, all construction, in, in a nutshell, all construction activity for tax, in this, in this instance, for economic development and redevelopment TIF districts must happen within the first, first five years. So we must, in this process, the city will have to have the government agreement approved in the first five years to pay the developer those funds. We must encumber those funds before that five-year. We'll talk a little bit about county roads. Uh, just to bring you aware of, of county road impacts on TIF, there are some annual reporting requirements that come with it. Uh, our firms, city staff, there's, there's, there's many consulting firms out there that also help with annual reporting requirements. And then, we, there's just a little, we don't have to worry about that here. I just wanna bring up to the county, or to the, to the city, that the county does have some say in this. So if this project moves forward from a county road perspective, we wanna notify the county as quickly as possible, because they have, they have the right to say, we have significant county road improvements because of this project, and potentially can tie to TIF. So, I just wanna make the council and staff aware that this is one of the things in, in developer, that if we move forward and the county says, we want increment, I ask, that is. Counties requiring a TIF, we'd see that work. Counties requiring some of those TIF assistance, getting rail projects, anchor projects. So, just wanted to bring that to your attention.
So what you're saying is that they would want some of that, that, those funds to offset their costs?
They could, they could. They have the right. And the hard part of all of it is, as you can see, we have a thirty-day notice to the county and school district, but, whoops. The county has forty-five days. So that can be, that can be a challenge, when we're already moving forward with the, the public hearing process, we've got the county and school district on board from a waiver standpoint, and then the county engineer, county board says, wait a minute, we've got this forty-five day period. So, uh, point being, is we just gotta engage the county engineer on this, if there's gonna be any requirements from county staff. That's TIF, in a quick nutshell. Any questions on TIF before I, before I proceed?
Any, any questions specifically on the TIF topic? Anybody?
Can I just, it's a really basic question, this might help me understand. Is there an example you can use, like, from, just for the basic definition, where if you say it reduces new property taxes? So is there a simple example that you could use to say, like, new property taxes would be X? You know, was that like an estimated, like, what the new property taxes would be, be based on the development for the person that owns that property?
Yes, it would, it would be focused on specific property. And what happens is, when we go on to this, is, we, we talked, like, I mean, if the, this moves forward, we actually ask, talk to the county assessor and say, okay, if this project was done today, what would be the market value on this? And they provide us a market value, and that helps get us into that new versus the old, it's the, you know, the original market value versus the proposed market value, and gets us into the capture. It doesn't affect the general property taxes, so to speak, to the city, because we're only using the property taxes itself. What happens with TIF and the tax, the city is saying, over the next X number of years, we're willing to postpone any of our tax collections on the new property alone. We still get our taxes on the basis as it is sitting today. The city, county, school district will still get their taxes as it is today. What we're agreeing to is over, over so many years, is we're gonna postpone our collection or our, take of our taxes. We're gonna reinvest that after the developer dealt with this project happened. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, based on the assessment of what it would be worth. Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, let's move on to abatement.
Abatement and, and TIF are, are very similar from a standpoint of how it's calculated, and I'll show you some calculation. But abatement doesn't have so much of a legal cumbersome process that TIF does. Abatement's a little bit more flexible from a standpoint of, of process and procedure. It does have a little, uh, public hearing, appointment, uh, for all taxing jurisdictions. But the main difference in TIF and tax abatement is, TIF, the council approves for all the entities, the school district, the county, they get, they get their review process. Well, with abatement, we have to go to each taxing jurisdiction individually and request approval. So that means three public hearings, three application process, really, three local jurisdictions review over it. Which can create some time issues, when you start talking about another, three, you know, three local units of government having to, having to review. We'll talk a little bit about the challenges of tax abatement applying to this project. You can use abatement. With TIF, it's only the new. With abatement, you can capture your existing taxes, and that's where you can get a revenue loss to the local jurisdiction. If, if the council so choose, if it feels that this project's of great value, and is to waive it, or if it's existing or abate, and to waive some of the existing taxes, you can do that in tax abatement. Again, we just have to have formal public hearing and public disclosure on, on the activities in the project. Must find a, in, in the approval of abatement, all jurisdictions must find some sort of public purpose to increase tax-based employment, provide public facilities, flighted areas, you can kinda see where it's, it, it mirrors TIF when we start talking about housing, economic redevelopment, TIF district, you can kinda start to see where, where abatement also mirrors that same use. The big thing is cities, school districts, and counties, and townships are the only entities that can approve abatement. Uh, with TIF, EAs, D3s can also approve TIF. It is calculated basic, basically on the, the new same as TIF, new versus the old. We get, we get to today's market value versus the proposed market value. That value then is translated, the difference in that value is translated to tax capacity, and it's captured as part of this project. But there's two types of abatement, it's a gold loan, or just the city uses it, and then there's the cooperative, where we potentially have the county and school district approve it. And then, and part of that is, we have to dispose so many years, how much? As part of that approval. We're limited to fifteen years, uh, with abatement, unless we can prove a hardship. And really, the hardship is, is if the county or school district says no, and the council then wants to say, okay, let's hold twenty. And we just have to have in writing, uh, or formal, we don't have so much as in writing from a, from a perspective of county or school district decline, we just have to give them, again, a period of time, give them so long, give that review and approval process. If they don't, then the council can move to twenty. The one big thing of, of abatement is, each, each entity is limited to about two hundred thousand, and, and abatement is on an annual basis. Again, specify a dollar, again, these are just some rules of abatement when we go through it. Uh, we must focus on, in this case, we would focus most likely on the increase of property tax resulting in the project. We'd have to identify a specific, uh, number of years, and when we wanna start that year. You can, with TIF, it's generally, uh, when you start the process and certify it with the county, and that's a, that's a clock, so it's taken with abatement, you can have some flexibility of when you wanna start that. This becomes a negotiation with the developer, and gets into the, into the detail. Here's just kind of a very similar abatement, you can kinda see again. Uh, in fact, I prefer to use the same form, a couple of my colleagues use a little bit different form. I prefer to use the same, 'cause you can see it. You see the original market value, the proposed with the new value. And in this case, you've got the original tax capacity of about three seventy, increase of about thirty-four, three fifteen, the captured amount. In this case, it's a city gold loan, only the city's tax rate's used. You can see that ninety-four, that equates to about thirty-two thousand a year. Again, I show on admin fee, the city has the right to charge any admin fee with abatement, you know, limited to ten percent, generally. You can see it's called a ten percent rule of TIF. So I just show that as a, as an administrative retention. Uh, so you can kinda see again, see what the net revenue is showing. So, this is over a, this happens to be a, a ten-year economic, or economic development, tax abatement. Similar to TIF, so you can see how it works. Again, here's a cooperative, uh, really, the only thing different here is you start to include the county, as you can kinda see the county and school district right there, or, excuse me, county and city right. Uh, we don't have a school district in this, uh, but you can kinda see all the abatement, again, over the, over the ten percent. The key, the key for the council is, this is always gonna change. The county's gonna set this on an annual basis, and this is pretty much gonna stay the same, it's gonna be locked in. But your value's gonna, your, your existing projected tax capacity's gonna change a little bit on an annual basis, as your, as your county assesses it. Can abatement and TIF work together? Uh, yes and no. Abatement's gonna be part of an active TIF district, however, you can approve an abatement back in the, an abatement on a TIF district. Where we've seen that is where a city is, or an entity, or jurisdiction's doing bonding, where you need fourteen, twenty years of co-operation efforts, uh, to make it happen, to, to drive down any debt service, unless you're a longer term on your bond, so that you end up doing a, a TIF district and back in the, in the abatement.
If you start with a TIF project and, uh, you went over the fifteen thousand square feet, can you then back into an abatement area then?
Maybe you can back if the, yep, that would be the, the opportunity the council could come back and say, we'd like to, because of this project, it's, it's now, now the tax increment, we want to, as a council, consider a gold loan or a cooperative abatement, depending on what the parameters of the, the challenges are. So you could do the abatement with that one.
Question.
Yeah?
Does the developer have to certify that the project wouldn't be possible if it were not for abatement?
You're gonna have to say, similar but for, it's not as, with abatement, it's not as strong, I mean, in the law, with tax abatement, or with TIF, at stage right in there, you have to make a lot more finding. We generally advise cities to make a but-for finding, when you're using abatement also, for this but-for, this assistance to project. So, we do ask them to make a same time.
How, how does a developer certify that, that it wouldn't be possible without?
It's, uh, upfront development costs, some of it, uh, if there's excessive upfront development costs, we see that quite a bit. Bank financing, they need, uh, there's a gap between equity and what the bank will do. There's this gap, they sometimes use that in TIF, or any municipal, instead of, to fill the gap. Those are the two general ones we see where there's, there's just an absorbant upfront cost to it, and anybody's gonna have it, so it just is a question of, does the city wanna use tax dollars to support the development?
Can I speak with that?
Yeah.
So in, in the context of a but-for statement, in a lot of the TIF districts, and most that I was involved with, you have that infrastructure development, you've got that. As, as the TIF funds are only able to be used at greater down, and you have most common new projects, so you've got significant, so, corrections, infrastructure, all that kinda stuff, that's why that works so well, versus a redevelopment of, and somewhat improved site, right? You know, if you've got the curb and gutter in, you got the sewer in, electrical, all in, utilities are all in, you remodel a building straight, but it'll do turn back. That seems to be the, the mechanism in the historical use of TIF. Follow, do you understand?
Yes, thank you.
That really separates the, the use of TIF as a function for those type of projects, new construction. Is that fair?
Yep.
Check the pilot back, I'm making noise here. So the, so the abatement, does that have a square footage of restriction?
No.
That is much more.
More flexible.
Could that be used in the house?
Yep, we also use abatement probably.
Question.
These are just the pros and the cons of a cooperative abatement, uh, versus TIF. A cooperative abatement between the county and school district is gonna be very similar to what a TIF, TIF would produce. However, we got some challenges, just specifically, TIF, you know, your process, you know, your, your timeline. With abatement, it's, again, you've got multiple jurisdictions, you've got a little bit longer, what I've experienced is a little bit longer review time than approval time to get an abatement, though. Uh, I think local jurisdictions are much more experienced with TIF than they are with economic development taxes. So, just a few there.
Can we go back, can we go back that one slide on your cons?
Yep.
Where school levy, where school levy remains significant, revenue leakage is at negative. Can you explain that?
That's where the, uh, the calculation, if you have, uh, on the tax based on the school district with TIF, as I spoke to the adjustment that needs to be made, some developers will look at that and say, we can't capture that, that's a leakage of our increment to the project. And so, school districts with higher tax rates, with higher, uh, tax rates on an annual basis, they get protected more, uh, it's usually because of debt, they've got some large debt, so their, everybody actually gets driven down, and the developer can see that as a leakage.
Okay, so this is, this is a con to the developer?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Not a con to the school district?
Correct.
Okay.
Uncertainty, uncertainty and delay, coordination, cooperation sometimes can be a little bit challenging, just trying to get, get all the parts moving together. And I'll be quite frank, I, when I talk to tax abatement, school districts seldom participate. I've had a couple that have participated in large housing developments, because they understand that the, the addition of a student has created an awesome of, of revenue on abatement. But generally, school districts don't participate in an abatement. My understanding of it, it hurts their general calculations, uh, in that, in the state form. So, coming out of school finance, actually, that's my understanding of it, so. This is, this is my best slide all night, 'cause you can kinda see it compared side by side. You got TIF and tax abatement, you got the, uh, benefits of TIF, again, it automatically captures all the taxes, taxes that each jurisdiction has to approve in tax abatement, so you can kinda see the, the approving entities. And that, you got a, a lot more legal reporting, uh, rules and regs to follow. These have a little bit, right now, tax abatement is not as legally cumbersome as TIF. Each jurisdiction calculates and budgets, one of the challenges with abatement, abatement's annually, annually, is you have a budget for it as a city or county if you're doing an abatement. So, when you do your, your, uh, budget, you'll see tax abatement, X, Y, Z corp, X amount. And so, what happens with abatement is, the, the city just sends your, your general levy, your general dollars, you've gotta then pull that abatement out of that general, the general levy. With TIF, you'll see it, the county, because the county administrators, it gets, it gets identified separately than, than your general levy. TIF has got, uh, some long-term, so does abatement on, on a limited basis. If you can't do all projects, you've got a little bit more flexibility, and that's with, with, with tax abatement. So, um, in closing, I guess maybe the best way is to move to some of the question and answer with council, 'cause I, I felt maybe I went through tax abatement a little quick for you, so I do apologize, uh, trying to re-respect your time. I think one of the challenges you will have with tax abatement, if you, if you wanna move forward with tax abatement on this project, is the county does not have an active tax abatement policy right now. So you're going to spend some time with the county on educating the use of it, possibly developing a policy around the use of abatement for the county. It's a retail development, which quite honestly brings competition, if you're gonna have a county to come out in it, uh, in terms of review of it. So, abatement will provide some challenges for you. And again, that doesn't fall on you as the city, that falls on the developer to move through that process, but that's just, uh, an experience that we'll see. With that, can you come to a positive?
Okay. Any other questions, all of them? Council members and commission members, anybody have any? Michael?
And I apologize that you, you probably have answered this a few times, but in a TIF district, if we were to create that, you're explaining the whole school, their calculation is different. So, they still get their, their portion of it plus some of what the original value was at?
Correct.
Okay.
By reducing that tax, well, you have that, that captured amount of the school district portion.
Okay. And in an abatement, they could choose not to participate still, though.
Correct.
Even, in the, in the, and also in the TIF, if we were to do a TIF, um, since it's basing off what the current value is today, the city isn't at a loss of funds, because we're still collecting what, what we were originally anticipating. Can you, can you go in the middle of, of that, of the TIF? Can you, can you go in the middle of, of that, of the TIF? Can you say, well, we're not going to go the full TIF district, we want to still capture like a ten percent increase? I don't know if I'm asking that the right way.
No, I, yeah, no, you're asking it the right way, I think. There's, when you do the, the TIF plan, it's going to capture a hundred percent of the new versus what it's going to capture. Where you control as a council is the amount and the length of the development agreement for the, for the development. So, let's just say it's, over nine years, this collects six hundred thousand, but you as a council says, well, you know, we, we, you know, we don't, we, we don't feel that, we don't feel that six hundred thousand's warranted on this. We want to cut it down to five years of four hundred thousand or a max of three hundred thousand. When you get, when you get three hundred thousand in total increment, the deal's done. So, from a standpoint of trying to control, uh, what the council has.
We have that control, so. And, I just lost it.
Move down, okay. Anybody else? Well, Michael gets his thoughts. Patrick, you have anything you want to add at this point, or?
No, I'm still waiting for that application, it hasn't come in in the last hour, so.
Obviously, that's number one, you know, as far as, Carrie?
I, the commercial tax rate says that, I believe there's a state tax also. Is that protected or is it captured also?
It is not captured in increment or abatement, you cannot, uh, it's only local taxes for TIF that you get to capture. So, the state change, I think, was nineteen ninety-eight, but it used to be part of the TIF formula, and I think it was nineteen ninety-eight, uh, changed law, so we can't touch that state portion of it.
I got it back again.
Okay.
Came back.
Michael's back.
Um, in years past, TIF was kind of looked as, as a negative. Was that due to the difference between the bond and the pay as you go, the liability issue with that?
I, I think so, I, you know, uh, I had a chance to chat with Jerry in the county a little bit before this presentation, and it sounds like, you know, the council, council committed to some bonds, the deal oneself, thus there's a shortfall, and there are some other challenges to development. Increment didn't come in as, as originally thought, so the council was unhooked for that. So I think that, from a bonding standpoint, it probably aggravated the situation for the council, stressed the council, I shouldn't say, it, it stressed the council in that situation. But, because in, in a bond situation, you're unhooked for it, and that's where, that's where you can see where the, the council probably had to redirect some resources, financial resources, to make those payments. And, uh, I don't have the history of the deal, but that can be stressful for the council, all of a sudden, you, you think you're going to get three hundred thousand dollars in increment to make this payment, and you get a hundred, a hundred and fifty, well, taxpayers run low for this, so.
Now, just, uh, from the standpoint of, if you do the pay as you go, the city doesn't have to incur any debt or anything like that to get this started, correct?
It's, in this, uh, no formal debt, but the pay as you go obligation is debt. But you're agreeing to reimburse the developer over time, ex amount of increment, uh, but it's based on their taxes. So, whatever, whatever they pay, they get that ninety percent, potentially get that ninety seven, ninety percent back, that's what the city pays, so.
So if the, if the city has enough cash on hand to do whatever infrastructure things that we need to do on our end, uh, we can put that in, and then we don't have to incur any debt?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Or you can require the, other, quite frankly, you can require the developer to put that in place, and that's an obligation, you use tax increment to reimburse it for, so.
Isn't that where some of the financing documents come in and have the, 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 the development agreement to participate in that capacity?
Yeah.
There's, you know, borrowing money against that future payment, so.
David?
A couple, a couple questions, one is, um, and again, I think, I think I, you probably have said it and repeated it a couple of times, but as far as abatement goes, and based on your limited research, it's potential that if we want the, if abatement was evolved that was chosen, there may only be one participant, and that might be the city.
Correct.
And it could still go forward under that scenario, it's just we wouldn't have a participating school or county.
Correct.
Okay.
So your, your potential, maybe the easiest way to answer that, Dave, is this, is your potential with just city go it alone, under this scenario, and we know this is the, would potentially be two hundred eighty-nine thousand, with the county adding the county into it, you have about five hundred fifteen thousand. It's going to come down to project needs, development costs, those type of things.
And then, the other question that, um, that I've heard in various meetings that I've had at the city here over the last, um, year to six months to a year, is that you can do abatement anytime. You know, tax increment financing, as you have mentioned, you need to get started before construction starts. Before the building permits are issued. But on the abatement side of it, um, what is the, what is the time period of that? I mean, I, I mean, I, and I, and I guess I did hear that, okay, we could start abatement three years later if we added property, and all of a sudden we could switch gears, but can, can abatement work at any point, or in this, in this project, based on what you know about this project today? How does abatement fit in with the but for clause and doing it ahead of fully permanent construction?
I think the easiest way to answer that is certainly you do abatement anytime. But you want to document as much as you can upfront the but for, and the but for would be project development cost, any, considering any circumstances with the development that they'll become. The timing of abatement is really going to be coming down to, if you wait, I guess the, the best way to explain it is, is if you wait three years to do an abatement, this tax, tax base is going to hit your tax rolls. And at that point, you know, three years from now, the development's done, and the developer comes in and says, you know, the cost for, or, we're finding, uh, we're finding that, uh, cost for absorbent, our, our take rate, our success rate hasn't been as good, we want you to, fifteen thousand over taxes, twenty-five thousand over taxes. At that point, it's already on the tax rolls, so the question to the council is, it's a revenue loss. Because now all of a sudden, your existing tax base, you're not getting any more, you're taking it out of the piece of the pie that's part of it. And so, the question to the council will be, for three years from now, abatement is, potentially it could be a revenue loss, all of a sudden, you've got to take twenty-five thousand out of your existing tax base. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, we could do it for a smaller amount for a longer term.
Good.
But you could also do it for future bases that haven't been constructed or fully assessed yet.
Fair? Yep. The timing of it is, is it, it, it's going to come down to, with abatement, TIF, you gotta do it upfront, so you're going to capture that, you're gonna, you're gonna have that starting point of existing base today versus tomorrow's, once the project's done. Abatement, you gotta time it, so, before that hits the tax rolls, because once it hits the tax rolls, it's a revenue loss, based on an existing.
How does the but for clause work, though, with that, if, if the project has already been up and running for three years, obviously, we've done without abatement?
It could have been, it could be financing, it could be a, uh, you know, like I said, uh, development, this is where the tape.
That's for the developer to prove?
It's what's up.
It's for the developer to prove?
Yeah, it's, it basically comes to the council, saying, these are our finances.
Ken, can I give you an example?
Please.
So you've got an existing building that hasn't been able to be rented, the rent roll is too high, so the potential suitor comes in and says, yeah, we like this property, but it's three, four, five dollars too high, is there any way you can make this work? Because we'll put this in, we'll put that in, but then you've got a discrepancy or a deficiency between what they would like to get and what they're willing to pay. So then they come back and say, but for this, you know, this incentive, we can get this tenant in here. That, and that's, sometimes they use, if you do, you follow that one?
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, it's a two-part question. Going back to today, as we stand today, with tax abatement, let's say the county, can they, county and school district, maybe they implement a maximum tax abatement policy of five years, even though the city wants to go to nine years, is that a possibility?
Sure. That, and each of them can guide, that's, that's.
That is the way I understood when tax abatement, tax first came out, saying, TIF districts, schools, cities, counties, you have no say. However, if you create a tax abatement policy, you may be able to do a shorter time period and then bring those parcels and their taxes back on the rolls faster.
By law, you're allowed up to fifteen years with hardship twenty, but again, it comes back to the county, cities and school district. If they're all, if they're all in this, they can say five years, they can say seven, ten, you know, one for ten, one for five. Seen that?
Which, which, which program protects the city, though, in the law?
Well, mainly, I guess, uh, the TIF, because you know from day one that you've got everybody captured. Abatement, there's, there's just so many variables. Unless you know exactly the county and school district's practices, that can, that from day one, you know, how you're going to calculate this abatement, what TIF we know.
If the TIF started to go south for some reason, you could go, switch to the tax abatement at any time during that period?
You could, uh, potentially, if, if, if the project is, is struggling, that's, that's a much broader question for the developer of, are you going to turn it around? Both ways, maybe in future investments, but.
I was slightly confused by the answer. When, when Mr. Mitchell asked the question, what would be the safer one for the city, you answered TIF because everybody's locked in. How is that safer for the city? I mean, if we did an abatement, isn't it up to the county and the school district to worry about their portions?
You could, I mean, it is, it's, it's up to their responsibility to approve their portion, but again, it goes from the city's ability to approve maybe only twenty-five thousand in abatement to potentially approving sixty, seventy thousand in increment.
So you're saying it's, it's safer for us to help the developer with us doing TIF?
Yes.
Okay. But your question is more for protection of the city.
That's correct.
The school district doesn't have to participate in an abatement.
Correct.
Is that what I understand?
Right, yes.
Yep.
So that the liability could be all in the city for the abatement, with the school district not participating?
County might not either, so it might be.
Right, so the expense would all be on the city.
But wouldn't we cap out at the two hundred thousand that you're, that you've?
That is just, and that's an annual, annual number, and that's a tax passing number, so I mean, it's, the city, you have, you could do, if, if you had ten of these deals, city had twenty-five thousand of abatement, you could do potentially the whole.
But if, if the city wouldn't abatement, we said, we're going to give you twenty-five thousand a year, whatever that case is, and they went to the county and asked them for the same thing, the county said, no, we don't have to pay their fee of that, we're still, we're still only liable for the twenty-five thousand.
This is your portion, so you have discretion in the abatement capacity to be picking and choosing which projects you wish to abate, given the fact that you're not creating a district per se? I mean, that, that one project might look a little more attractive than another, you know, from, from the city's discretion on, but you know, how, how you want to look at that?
Ultimately, I think the best conversation, well, once we get the application from the developer and we see the need, we can understand what those development costs are going to be, that financial assistance piece that the developer will be, will be much better positioned at that point in time to say, this is the value of TIF, this is the value of abatement on the city deal, or, or county, you want to have county and school district in there. Right now, it's very hard, because we're talking hypotheticals and what ifs and how much.
Yeah.
It's easier to, it's, it'll be much easier in a month, or two weeks, ten days, whenever the application is submitted, to have the conversation, the council will say, this is your, this is the dollar, so there's abatement for TIF.
They could come back saying, we only need two hundred thousand for assistance, and we could go, well, we could help that in just the city abatement alone, and we don't have to cross the, the curve, okay?
Question?
Yeah.
The but for, uh, clause applies also to small city ru-
Yep.
And it, and that's part A, part B, it, it is up to the developer to certify or convince us the but for. Okay, and then my question is, they've already got a whole bunch done, uh, it sounds like, you know, they're planning on going ahead based on all their schedules, whether they get it or not, it would help them, but it sounds like there is no but for this, we wouldn't go ahead.
See, ultimately, the developer left to answer that, I, I.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Donovan, I think a lot of the, as a, as a former developer, you, you have a lot of dollars that are invested already that you would submit, what we've been versed on, so that's a heck of a start, because there was, there was a significant correction on that site, I don't know if you saw it during that.
Yeah, I, I saw it, but my point is, it's been invested, and they've, they've already gone forward a certain extent, and my assumption would be, well, they're going to continue to go ahead.
Well, as, again, in my practical, if you have a sort of development experience, now I can make a decision, if I go, I'm going to get some assistance from the city, I can make a commitment to a certain type of construction that I can otherwise afford now, but for the fact that I couldn't otherwise. You know, because that construction of that clinic is going to be two hundred fifty, three hundred dollars a square foot, with the dedicated circuit and everything in there, and, and those dollars are fungible, as you can imagine, I mean, you get reimbursed for, for site directions, but get now that three thousand dollars to make a further commitment to a particular type of construction, that you can get a certain type of tenant, that a medical is much more expensive, as you probably guessed, than just your standard box, you get what I'm saying?
Yes, thank you.
Well, it is, and, I mean, I can, and, I mean, I can address that to Mr. Donovan as well, from the standpoint, the site was, we had a correction made on the site, but from that standpoint, we're, we're just getting into the details, sort of in the weeds that everybody is saying here. You know, we didn't know who the tenants were at the time the site got corrected. We know now, we can come back and fill out this application, which we didn't have the information to fill out before to say, how much does sewer cost? I don't even know that number for sure today, I think we're really close to getting it, how much is the site improvement's going to cost? You know, how much is the land value pieces? I mean, we're just compiling that all now, there's, while we have verbal commitments from the organizations that I have shown there, you know, nobody has signed the lease to say, yeah, so what are we doing, because we haven't filled in what the amount on the lease is. So there is still a but for happening here in this whole thing, because you need to collect all this information, so people can put it together and say, well, you know, what is it? Does it work, doesn't it work? And, and that's the application, and the, and the response we need to bring back to the city, which we're preparing, but we just don't have all the details.
Yeah, and I don't.
Submit it in the next hour.
Yeah, I don't want to get into, you know, the, the dollar values and stuff like that, because we're not to that point yet.
Yeah.
I think the, the thing, the best thing to understand here is just understanding the basics. And, kind of the way I understand it is that, from the standpoint of protection for the city, the, the TIF having everything documented and all, all the i's dotted and all the t's crossed upfront, uh, basically provides us with a level of security that you don't necessarily get in the abatement.
Yeah, that's, that would, that's why I feel comfortable, Mayor, I, I prefer TIF over abatement, just again, you know the program, you know what you're getting in, right? With the, and you know the powers that the council has, with TIF, with abatement, there's just so many other, but again, would you better answer that question once the application's?
Right, yeah, that's, that's the key thing, is we get that, that application in, so that, once that application, that kicks off our, basically, that's time zero for getting everything started, so.
Neil has a question.
I was just wondering, has the city ever abated taxes before, for any reason?
Uh, I can't think of any doing any abatement, I know we've done a couple of TIFs, but I don't think we've done any abatements, um.
I don't recall any.
Kathy, would you have any of that in your memory bank?
Not right now.
Okay.
I don't recall one, Mr. Murphy, there were three TIF districts.
Yeah, we've had, uh, TIFs, but we, I don't recall ever having an abatement.
I've been through three of them.
I was just wondering if a struggling developer could come in here anytime and ask for abatement, and, and sort of lead the but for situation? Or a struggling business owner?
If we have a struggling business owner, a struggling, uh, developer that wants to come in, and he actually has sincere plans to do some growth in the city, the city is more than willing to talk to him about, uh, any, uh, assistance possible to get that project going. If he can show the but for, you know.
But would it have to be for growth in the city?
Well, I wouldn't want to be taken away from the city.
For a developer to spend money on this property, year in, year out, and, and it's not producing what he needs it to produce?
As far as doing TIFs and stuff like that for improving properties, how does that work?
Just the abatement.
Just abatement.
Not TIF.
There's, there's really, if you, if you went down that case, you'd still have to have, uh, public benefit, you'd have to have the, the developer or the business owner have to prove one of these public benefits. Most like, most likely, what would happen if you have a struggling business? They're not going to come after tax abatement so much, economic development tax abatement, they're going to go after their property taxes, most likely, and say, my value, time out, my value's too high, and we know that that's a border review. So, generally, that's where you start to see the fallout.
I think the answer is the city's more than willing to listen to business owners in the community, we just entered into an agreement with Blade Act. We just entered into an agreement with Blade Act at the last meeting.
Yes.
And they have additional tools and resources under the other, under the agenda, that may be the topic. Sheila Harrowham said she would be here, but then it came up she couldn't be here, but that is another tool for us, and she'll come to the council in future.
Right.
So there are tools, the answer is, come to the city and we'll talk.
Yeah, no, I wasn't, I wasn't necessarily speaking for myself, I was just saying that if you're, if you're, and you can provide employment in a city, and something changes economically for you, you could meet that requirement, you could come in and say, "Look, I'm not bringing any employees, I'm just doing a bunch of employees in the city if you don't help." And I'm just wondering if that is, if that doesn't provide the, the requirement for abatement?
I think the way you're describing it, I'm not sure if that would really meet the requirements for abatement. That would probably definitely meet the requirements for coming in for your board of review to get your taxes looked at as being too high.
But what would be the difference between that and building and development and coming in after work the same, look, three years after the project, give you back the but-for three years later that Tracy was talking about? If you're in there but-for three years later, you're saying, "Somebody can work out my plan."
If I may, Mayor.
Yeah.
Correct, probably, but they're, they're really the two options. I mean, you can go after the board of review and future tax law transition, but, but he is right, Jones is right, you could come in under, if the, if the council moves forward with an abatement, that's where policy is going to be critical, because again, you have the opportunity to abate only the taxes, or you have the opportunity to be existing taxes. So that's where you've got to be clear in your policy development and your practice that if, if you head down this road, you want to help this business owner and say, "Okay, when we lose employment, you know, I'm just trying to reserve my tax bases, you know, if I close, if I close my business, values are going to drop." You could certainly meet this public purpose, but that's where the council, if you go down the abatement route, you're going to want to have a clear policy and practice on, on your use of it.
We'd have to create a policy.
That would be my suggestion.
And you stated that earlier, I think, you said the county did not have a tax abatement policy themselves.
So, so Jason, are you here on behalf of the city then? Is this, is this your goal?
Yeah, yeah. I am here to protect the city, because that's, that's our number one priority, is to use the city, we're not going to, we're not going to offer, we're developing the city, the development process.
He's going to be our consultant.
And it's in, in anticipation of an application, you guys?
Yes.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, by my...
Yes.
As the council has been considering, and again, I go back to my experience with tax increment financing. You consider the developer, you consider the economic benefit, the other third part in there is the, any of this can be paid in taxes. You know, your assessment or review of the ultimate user of the property, their story, their historical capacity in other places, their business overview and, and, and capacity historically and where they're going to go forward. So that's the third consideration that you have a purview of, in this, in this proposition. And I think, and if I, I don't speak out of school, but I believe that if I recall, there were certain conditions within the development agreement that you could place that these, these particular tenants, if they were proposed, the ones that were going to be there, and they had traditional leases and lease letters and tenants, or that could be part of the development agreement as well, right?
You can, you can, and I think broadly, I think from a standpoint, if you get into that development specific, you're, you're going to have a lot of, the i's, the t's crossed, but mainly, I think, from a protection of the city is, you just, you can't transfer any property or can't sell any property without consent of the council during this, and I think that gives you the broader protection.
Yeah.
The contingent of, the final signature, the lease fully acceptance occupancy, all those conditions can be within your development agreement, they give you a lot of protection inside.
We have a lot of decisions to make.
Can I just confirm something that I'm thinking? With the, with the TIF, the county, you said collects the funds in that case, and with the abatement, is that more where, whatever the abatement amount is going to be, the city needs to budget for that amount every year? And then they can budget whatever amount they, they need to, or is it like a level?
Whatever the agreement is, is if, you know, you know, if the city commits abating 25,000 for 10 years, the city needs to budget that 25,000.
Okay, so the commitment's upfront for each of the years?
The, I think the, try not to get too in-depth, because I just want the, TIF specifically, when they pay their property taxes, the county then will see that it's in a TIF district, pull that increment out, pay the school district, county, city, part of their general, the portion of the original amount, and then send that increment to the city as a line item as part of the, their settlement statement. So the city knows exactly how much increment was collected in that year. With a payment, you agree to, to pay it, but it's part of the general lending formula. So you, as a city, have to pull that expense out rather than the county. Did I answer that correctly? I think that's the best way to, to try and increment, the county grades it out for you, sends it to you, abatement, you on an annual basis as a city, know that there's new property taxes, but we have to extend it all.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
I would just, like, the tax period. Really, it's, you know, you can say any, any tax deal is, is a, affects the, the community, but in this case, you're only using the site. You're not, you're not using my taxes to help any somebody, you're using what's generated on the site with both the, so, like I said earlier, with any incentive, whether it's TIF or abatement, you just agreed to delay tax collection on that new portion over a period of time. So if costs go up to operate the city, more please, or quiet, generally then that's, that's protected a little bit, and that's where the, the burden of falling existing taxes is, so, but most of that, that's minimal.
Because with an abatement, you could, that could affect the tax base more, correct? Where if you actually reduce their...
Yep. If you all of a sudden, if I'm a struggling business owner, and they say, "Council, I need 5,000, and, you know, I pay 7,000 in taxes per year, city portion, I need 5,000 on back, tell me over the next five years, you're losing that 5,000."[1782.75]